I am closing the executive session. We have nothing to report. And now, I will open the City Council meeting for August 13th, 2024. Let's start with an invocation, and the Pledge of Independence invocation will be led by me. Lord, thank you for letting us be here tonight. Thank you for a beautiful city in which to live. Thank you for a wonderful world in which to live. Tonight, I want to thank you specifically for the men and women who work for the city of Kerrville. We often don't even think about the sacrifices they make every day. Thank you for those who work even late in the night to make sure we have the things we expect from our city. Or thank you for the rain we've received. If it's your will, please send more. We ask these things in your name.
Amen.
............................................................
Stuart, are you ready?
Yes, sir. I'll say welcome to everybody tonight. I have three quick announcements, and all of them are repeats, so bear with me. He's just got a few things to bring up again. Parks and Recreation is still taking registration for the KICKball League. I think the deadline is August 23rd, and they'll begin play September 4th. That's a great league and a lot of fun to watch. So if you get a chance and you want to register, you can do that online, or you can call the Parks office. This is another repeat, but we are still looking for people to take the community update survey, Kerrville 2050 update. This will really help us going forward. We're going to be trying to do these every few years as we update our plans. We can keep it current. That survey will be closing this Thursday, so if you haven't taken yet, we encourage you to do it. Make sure we get your feedback. Also, you could do that on our Facebook page or on our website, so. And finally, we're still taking applications for the Citizens Academy. We have Citizens Police Academy, and that's a great event. It's a great way to learn about the police department. Well, this does the same thing, but it does it for the city of Kerrville. You get a lot of opportunity to go behind the scenes and see how our various departments work. So we encourage you to sign up for that. And again, that's also on our website and on our Facebook page, so please check that out. It's a lot of fun. And that will do it for me for this week.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many survey responses have you gotten so far?
Close to 400.
Wow. All right, does any council member have an announcement of community interests?
Well, I have something to say.
Please do.
I just want to apologize for the way our lawn looks in City Hall, in front of City Hall. We are not responsible for maintaining that, so I just don't want you to think we're neglecting our premises. So I believe the Calhoun Foundation is responsible for the lawn maintenance. That's it.
Probably looks better than my yard, so there we go. Anybody else? All right, we have a presentation, a proclamation of Kerrville as a tourism-friendly community, and I would hope that y'all would meet me down there.
Is that okay for our board?
Yes, the board, everybody. Come on in.
They're looking shy.
Yes, that's how we attract tourism. We are shy.
We're shy shy. How did you know?
Kerrville crafted shy.
That's right.
All right, I'd like to read the proclamation, and then I'd like to go down the line, and y'all tell us your role with the CVB and how long you've been in that role. And any other little tidbit you care to share with us, all right? So here we go. This is a proclamation to the city of Kerrville, and I signed it. Whereas travel and tourism provides significant cultural benefits for the city of Kerrville, and whereas meetings, events, leisure, and travel are all key components to Kerrville's economy; and whereas many of Kerrville's hospitality and tourism businesses are part of the foundation that makes Kerrville a unique and memorable travel destination; and whereas visitors relish the many tourism offerings of Kerrville, including the city's multiple sporting events, hiking and biking trails, Guallope River activities, parks, art, culture, and music concerts; and whereas the city of Kerrville has also been recognized as a music-friendly community; whereas we acknowledge that all travel, whether related to leisure or business, is beneficial; and whereas welcoming visitors from near and far always has been and always will be a vital part of Kerrville's attraction. Now therefore, I, Johann Jr., Mayor of the city of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim August 13th, 2024, as Kerrville as a tourism-friendly community. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Some of you may not realize that I was mayor a long time ago, when my children were little. And I trained them whenever they saw a tour bus to go by, "Don't wait." All right, we're going to take a picture, and then we'll go through. And do you want you to hold this for the picture? To make sure everybody can see the picture. There we go.
One more.
All right. One, two, three, and one more. Thank you.
Let's start with my neighbor.
My neighbor. Catherine Boyett, Community Arts Program, and I've been over at the Convention Visitors Bureau for about a year now.
Congratulations. And you have an event coming up later this month?
Which one? Yes, we have a ribbon. We have a ribbon cutting for the library ramp. Yes, we're very excited about it. Project number two, yes.
I'm Tara McGuire, and I'm the Visitor Center Manager, and I just started in February.
Congratulations.
Loving it so far.
Welcome on board.
Thank you.
Julie Davis, I'm the President of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I have been there 22 years.
Almost since my kids.
Right when I got out of high school, obviously.
I'm Corbin Lofton, and I'm Week in Stock, and I've been working here for a year.
Cindy Matthews, and I'm the Vice President/COO, and I've been here probably about six years.
Leslie Jones, PR and Communications Manager, and I've been with the CVB for 10 years. And we do still expect your children to wave.
They do. They're flexible.
Hi, Lisa Winters, and I'm on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, going on my ninth year.
I'm Mindy Widdley, I'm on the board also, and I'm in my fifth year.
I'm Doug Hetzler, and I'm also on the board, and I'm just coming up to one year now.
So when you see people visiting our community, when you see tour buses, you see groups at conventions, you see people filling up our hotels, these people work to make that happen. So let's get them around. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the recognition.
Thank you.
One of the top places to go in Kerrville.
Yep. Go see Doug. Come see Doug.
All right, thank you. And that's sincere. Thank you for all you do. Item 2B is the City Council 2050 Work Plan. I'm going to call Mr. Zanoni. Yes, please proceed.
Yeah, so the process of this was, it started with the city manager and a professional facilitator, where they reviewed key issues facing the city and to prepare for the planning session. And then following that, the facilitator, they engaged city staff and council in a SWOT analysis, where we later discussed the comments that were collected. And then on June 14th, in the city of Kerrville, the city of Kerrville leadership team and the city council met for a workshop to review the 2050 plan and select the items that were important to address in fiscal year 2025 and 2026. So city staff and council selected six major priorities through a marking system, where we were given a certain amount of markers, and we selected our top priorities. And these were ranked by a cumulative score. And so our first priority was public facilities and services. And so we want to ensure high-quality, cost-effective services by using public-private partnerships for technology needs and collaborating with other government entities. So our second priority was housing in neighborhoods, and we want to offer diverse housing options for all demographics while preserving the quality and value of existing neighborhoods. So our third priority was water, wastewater, and drainage. We want to plan for growth, floods, and future droughts by developing long-range water and stormwater management plans, prioritizing infrastructure, addressing water quality challenges, and emphasizing green infrastructure. Our fourth priority was economic development. We want to diversify the tax base, enhance quality of life, promote thoughtful retail growth, establish Kerrville as the hill country hub, and support education and entrepreneurship. Our fifth priority is community and neighborhood character and place-making. So we want to promote walkability and healthy neighborhoods that support economic development while celebrating and revitalizing neighborhoods without displacing residents. And then our sixth priority is downtown revitalization. We want to organize downtown events and create gathering spaces while we promote a walkable pedestrian-friendly environment that connects downtown to nearby neighborhoods. And that is all I have.
Dalton, you have some words?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Nell, thank you for, you know, presenting this. So for the audience and for the public that don't know, Nell Zanoni is our Management Analyst. He is a student at Shriner University. We got him probably a month or so ago. I don't know, time flies. But no, this was a great opportunity for him to kind of present. His first big event here was going to the City Council Strategic Planning Workshop. And so really, for the public and for the audience, you know, this was an opportunity for council and the leadership team to really come together and kind of hash through, you know, what are some of the challenges that we're facing as a city, you know, our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities. And while we have the comprehensive 2050 plan that we follow and that we go and we're obviously updating now, this opportunity gives council the ability to break down into smaller segments each year and do a 12-month to 24-month work plan to really identify those upcoming, you know, challenges and priorities. So with that, Mayor, these were the priorities that were selected by, you know, council and the team for the next 12 to 24 months. Of course, we'll continuously improve and update these. We want to get some of the feedback on this. These were all done by a dot matrix, where we put up all these boards. These things were directly from the 2050 plan, and any feedback is welcome from council.
Anybody?
No.
Go ahead, please.
I will give feedback. That's my second one, last year, this year. I liked the way staff did it with council this year, because it was not just council saying one needs to be done. It was senior staff that was also part of the process of helping everybody say this is a priority for our city. So thank you all for including, thank you, Dalton, for including your staff to be part of that with us.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I would just echo that. It was great to have the team there, because I learned, I learned things I didn't know about, some of the things we were bringing to y'all to do. It's probably good to get that feedback earlier than later, so that was very good.
As Mr. Rice will probably testify, I bring the summary of that meeting with me when we go over future agenda items. And I say, what items are meeting the objectives that we set at that council retreat? And so I encourage you, when you meet with Mr. Rice, what future agenda items are addressing the priorities we wanted to accomplish? Because if it doesn't get on the agenda, it doesn't actually happen. I also appreciate that the council, it wasn't, it was collaborative. It wasn't just the council saying, "We will do this, and we will go in this direction, we'll climb that hill, and we'll fight this dragon." We all fought the dragon together, which was nice. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you for that.
Mayor, Council, thank you.
Do we have any visitors?
We have none signed up. However, we do have a citizen who would like to speak on 4F.
All right. Can we do this? We will go ahead and, we'll go down through the consent agenda. We will have the resolutions read in. We'll see if any council member wants to pull an item, and then we'll have the citizen speak on 4F, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Let's read in the resolutions, please.
4A, Resolution Number 33-2024, a resolution authorizing the donation of surplus eclipse glasses to astronomers without borders.
Mayor, Council, we only have to read in the ordinances. The resolutions are good.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, thank you. I did not know that.
Good practice.
That was my fault. All right, does any council member wish to pull any item in the consent agenda?
Maybe we should pull 4F, so we can...
Okay, we'll pull 4F. Is there a motion to adopt all the other items in the consent agenda?
I don't want to pull, but I have a question about 4A. How many glasses were left over?
Um, roughly about 70,000 or something.
70,000?
Is that counting both lenses, or just?
Thank you, Ashley.
All right. So is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda, save 4F?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda, except item 4F.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Brenda, do you want to vote? I voted. 4F.
And 4F is the item that the citizen wanted to speak up on.
All right, who would that be? Mr. Barudy?
George Barudy.
I was worried today. I saw the print shop, you were walking away from City Hall, and I didn't know. I was going to say, City Hall.
I don't live at City Hall. Just clarify that. I live at 1616 Glen Road. That's George Barudy. No, so it's just a, more or less a question. So the 4F has, I mean, generally speaking, is park renovations, right? And in it, it talks about, it's actually part of your itemized cost in there. It talks about utility survey, underground survey, and then it goes on to say that they aren't going to be doing it, because I guess they're waiving that part of it. So the question is, why are we paying for something that they're not actually going to do? Is this like a $1,500 charge? So that's really the only question.
Staff have a reply?
That is, we'll look into that and provide an answer back on that. I don't have an answer with you.
Now this, well, that's good. This is basically the placate, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Boulah? All right, is there a motion to adopt 4F?
I'll make a motion to adopt 4F. It is, what is the, the general contract?
Correct. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. Hey, hold on. It is unanimous. Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Barudy. All right, we're down to item 5A, which is a public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up for this?
No, sir.
All right. Who is leading this off? Mr. Paxton, thank you.
I will need to read this ordinance.
Oh, you are correct. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Ordinance Number 2024-19, an ordinance creating a planned development district zoning to authorize medium-density residential district uses and short-term rental units, consisting of Comanche Trace Phase 13 Block D, lots 1 through 6, and more commonly known as 301, 303, 305, 307, 309, excuse me, 001, 3579, and 3011, Clubhouse Road, and Comanche Trace Phase 18 Lots 7 through 28, and more commonly known as 4528 Comanche Trace Drive, units 7 through 28, adopting the concept plan and conditions and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, it is a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a planned development district to rezone these two portions of the Comanche Trace neighborhood to allow short-term rental in addition to the R2 medium-density residential units. And here's the current zoning. They're both R2. And as part of the future land use plan, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So they are adding, as part of their, the clubhouse operates several units as a stay-in-play as part of their marketing, and for their homeowners to be able to use as short-term rental, all managed through the Comanche Trace Clubhouse. So these properties will be eligible for that program if the owners choose to. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved it with unanimous vote, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Paxton before I open the public hearing? No? All right. Open the public hearing at 6:20. Close the public hearing at 6:20. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this ordinance as it's been written.
On the first reading.
On the first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. All right. Item 5B. Kelly.
Ordinance Number 2024-20, an ordinance amending ordinance numbers 2019-14 and 2021-25, which created and then amended a planned development district on an approximate 58.74-acre tract of land out of the Joseph S. Anderson Survey Number 141, Abstract Number 2, and the JS Sater Survey Number 142, Abstract Number 290, generally located north of and in the 1,000 to 1,200 block of Thompson Drive, Spur 98. This amendment to revise the previously adopted land use table, providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Mr. Paxton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is amending the existing planned development district. They've worked on a couple lots to replat some of these lots. The lot adjacent to the river is under contract with UGRA, so they updated that section to public and institutional land uses to allow UGRA to do their functions on that property. Lot 13R originally went all the way to the river, and so that lot is now smaller, and added in the addition of townhomes on a couple of lots. So this is the new concept plan, and here's the plat that was approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. There's the list of land uses, moving the retail lots to land use more consistent with our current zoning for C3, R3 for the multifamily lots, and professional office, which also has the option of R3 for townhomes. And then again, 902R, changing that to PI, Public and Institutional. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Paxton?
What about staff? Does staff recommend? Yes, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The staff recommended it as well.
We do have representatives of UGRA and the McDonald Companies here. Do we have any questions for them?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, please.
Drew, can you please show us, I'm sorry, Mr. Paxton, can you show us where the easement is that gives access? I just seem to remember there was a little heated conversation about access and easements and roadways, and I know, I know due diligence has been done by the McDonald Company and put the teahouse in, but then there was a little bit of other
Yes.
ongoingings with that. I just want to see where that easement is for them.
You may be able to see it on your screen on the upper left-hand side.
It's very faint, Mr. Paxton.
Yes, there's a small, kind of L-shaped curve easement that is on the face of the plat. So once they finalize that construction, the plat can then be recorded as per the ordinance closing naperoad. So this plat has not been recorded, because that has not been completed as of today, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Paxton, or from the McDonald Companies, or UGRA who is in attendance? All right, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:24. Close the public hearing at 6:24. entertain a motion on this ordinance, first reading.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance Number 2024-20 on first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, so vote. And it passes unanimously. All right, we are at 6A. This is another ordinance, first reading. Ms. Meismer.
Ordinance Number 2024-22, an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4, Boards and Commissions, Section 2-91, Senior Services Advisory Committee of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by revising the meeting schedule and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
And this is not a public hearing, correct?
No, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to get this right. I only have 21 more months in my term, and I'm going to...
It's okay.
Ms. Meismer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have a presentation for tonight, but I will provide a summary of this item. The Senior Services Advisory Committee has identified a need to improve its efficiency by changing the meeting frequency from monthly to quarterly. The committee focuses on four major projects, which are the senior dance in December, the community service project, that they decide what they're going to, what they want to do during that year, AARP grant application, and then keeping the senior services resource guide updated. So they voted unanimously at their meeting on July 25th to recommend this change to the council. The committee believes that this adjustment would better align the meeting schedule with project updates, improve efficiency, and enhance member engagement. At the senior services, as the Senior Services Advisory Committee was established by ordinance, this change requires approval through two readings of a revised ordinance. If approved, the new schedule will begin with the next meeting on October 24th, 2024. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for Ms. Meismer.
What was the second thing? They do a dance? They do what? What's that second thing?
Consideration of a community service project. This year, their project was the fan project.
Okay.
Donating fans.
We recognize them at the last...
And they've done a blanket donation, too.
We did a, we recognize them at the last council meeting, if I remember.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you, do you think that it would hurt them to go to quarterly meetings?
I don't. They also have subcommittees also. So in October, they'll probably establish a subcommittee for the dance. That subcommittee will meet and make sure that the dance is going to go off perfectly, and, you know, everything's going to be arranged and everything, so they can have subcommittee meetings without having a full board meeting.
Any other questions for Ms. Meismer?
So does this mean we can cut your compensation?
Yes, because they don't get compensation.
Okay, sorry about that.
Noted, noted. Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance Number 2024-22 on first reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, so vote. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very small item next, 7A. Mr. Rice.
And, Mr. Mayor, we do have two citizen speakers signed up for 7A.
Thank you kindly. We're going to start with Mr. Rice, and I think followed up by Ms. Barron's.
All right, while he's pulling that up, you know, we'll, oh, there we go. Perfect. Perfect timing. And budget. So it is that time of year again. We are here to present the 2025 proposed budget to council. Y'all will get to hear from Julie Barron's here shortly. Really, what I just wanted to kind of go over, just from a high-level executive summary side of, you know, where we are and kind of what we've been doing. The theme of this year's budget, Beyond Tomorrow. And we've talked extensively with our team, with council, and really for the public. You know, Beyond Tomorrow tells us and really defines what we're trying to look forward to, not just for, you know, the past, the present, and the future, but really, how do we start preparing for the challenges that are coming? We know that there's a lot of stability. We know there's a lot of economic changes. We know there's challenges everywhere we face, you know, from preparing for, you know, being fiscally responsible, to, you know, to staffing, providing the amenities that our community wants. How do we start preparing for that? So we really, our teams really spend a lot of time diligently focusing... So we really, our teams really spend a lot of time diligently focusing on how do we prepare for tomorrow? We did this through a bunch of different, you know, methodologies. We really challenged our teams to kind of, you know, again, how do we invest in our personnel? How do we continue to, you know, look forward? How do we continue to maintain those services without, you know, without making, you know, unnecessary cuts? How do we continue to have that citizen engagement, the customer service that our community, you know, that our community expects? You know, and of course, how do we do this while focusing on the council's priorities and the community's priorities, you know, each and every year? And so multifaceted approach to this and our team has done a really great job at that. So through those accomplishments and milestones, not going to read each one of these, but, you know, some important things to kind of note out of here. $77.7 million in capital projects going on right now. You know, $2 million-plus dollars, you know, spent on roads. We have HHHC project going on to, you know, bring some more, you know, history into the community, you know, workforce housing, business attraction. You know, all of these have their own, you know, little accomplishments, you know, inside of these and I wish we could hit them all, but that would be a whole presentation in and of itself. You know, from the downtown revitalization side, in the short 11 months that I've been here, 10 months that I've been here, you're starting to see a lot more walkability. I think even more so, you know, in the downtown, we brought the farmer's market, or we didn't bring it, the farmer's market came to downtown. Citizen engagement kicked off the first Citizens Academy and we're about to kick off our second cohort with that. Again, transparency's been a, not just a buzzword, but a big focus on, you know, not just what we're doing, but letting everybody see what we're doing and how we're doing it. You know, from interactive budgeting tools, you know, with the budget to, again, the Citizens Academy is another great example of that. Financial reporting, the Triple Crown Award, we've talked about before. Our team continuously tries to work through and get, not just get awards to say that we got awards, but to show really what our teams are capable of, what our teams are doing every single day, not just for our employees, but also for the community that we serve. Public safety personnel and recruiting and retention, these are kind of all rolled into one. We spent a lot of time and Julie's going to talk a little bit about some of those because we did have to make some very challenging decisions this year on personnel and budget. But what we've done is we've taken the retention approach and how do we, how do we take care of our existing personnel, those that have been here and continue to serve our community? And so we were able to make some, you know, some adjustments here and there, align with some of the private, not necessarily private market, but align with some of the market challenges that we're facing, all while maintaining, you know, a balanced budget and keeping a relatively flat budget. Let me back up.
Sorry.
This thing, oh.
It's not me.
Perfect. And so, just like the mayor and council had alluded to, every single thing we talk about is now going to start incorporating the city council priorities and the strategic focus. And even more so, as we, as we continue to develop these, you know, we're going to take that to the next level and how do we tie these back to even the subcategories within those plans? And everything that we bring to council, everything that we bring to the community, we want to be able to tie it back to some strategic, you know, planning focus of council and of course, the 2050 plan. And the way we're kind of doing that is through the direct, which is exactly what city council has done in their workshop, and then the indirect side, which again, is we're still applying things to the 2050 plan, but a lot of the things that we're going to focus on with this will indirectly apply, you know, to that. So we plan on getting those metrics and everything to council and everything we do, we're going to continue to try to focus on that priority-based budgeting as we move forward. Next. And without, you know, if there's no questions on that, we're going to dive into kind of the meat of it, the proposed budget. And Mayor, turn it over to you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Rice before we go to Ms. Barron's? All right. Julie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I know you all have been anxiously waiting this night, as have we. Ready to get this presented and any questions answered and wrapped up. But before we start, I do want to just thank our budget team. I mean, I think we have a really good staff that worked with us very closely. I know they get probably tired of hearing from me saying, yeah, we need to rethink this or we need to rethink that. But it's been a really good process this year and I think the budget team that we've assembled has been really good. And then to my staff, really for keeping the wheels on for the last few months, it's been a super busy summer, but Trina and Jacob have been really instrumental in developing this budget and bringing it to y'all. So wanted to make sure we give credit where credit is due. Certainly couldn't do it alone. So also, just wanted to say, kind of a follow-up to what Dalton said, we really do have a focus on transparency. And so some of the things that I think you've seen in the past year, year and a half, and then moving forward, have been to make sure we're getting the information out to the public and for anyone who knows or has picked up the phone, you know that either one of us will answer and sit down and answer questions if we need to or talk through a process or anything like that. So especially as we leap off into property tax, it's way too much to get to the, to the details of it tonight, but we're always happy to talk through that with anybody who might have questions on just how did we come to those numbers. Okay. So we're going to dive in somewhere. Okay, so what we're going to do is a quick economic update. It's going to be probably a little bit of a repeat, but just to kind of let you know how we use those indicators as we build the budget, talk about the general fund, the water fund, and then a little bit on capital projects, but that's really for a separate conversation and some other funds that we'll talk through there. Okay. So economic update. So you've seen these graphs before and these are updated graphs through as most recent as I can get them. Really kind of the story here is inflation still continues to impact us and we all see it. I mean, I think that sometimes there's a thought that the city is exempt from those inflationary pressures and they're not. I mean, those same expenses exist, just in a little bit different scope, but we're all feeling that in our personal lives. But we really do take a look at that when we're looking forward to see what's going to happen. We do kind of feel like the Fed is going to make some cuts here in the next couple of months and that would be my guess, just on all the reading that I've done lately. You know, we'll see how that actually happens, but I think what we're seeing is leveling. We're not going to see the bottom drop out of pricing, but really not seeing those big jumps that we were seeing in '23. And for anyone who was part of the '23 budget process, it was tricky because we really didn't know what to expect. So we did have some surplus in '23. In '24, you know, not so much, but again, that leveling started in '23. So we were able to kind of predict and budget better for that. So we're hoping that we've done that. I brought this one in because the water fund is so heavily affected by CPI, especially petroleum-based stuff. And so as we talk about water, I think we really need to consider where the pricing comes from. So different than a gallon of milk, pipe in the ground is going to be more petroleum-based and we know what gas prices have done. Of course, this is retail gas prices that you can see just historically, looking back from 2019 when we were like 270 a gallon and then up to the time when none of us even wanted to drive, to where now it's a little bit more reasonable, I guess. And then if you look back on CPI all the way back, I went back many years, but back to 2020, we were less than 1%. And so when you jump to 9% within a matter of, you know, 15, 16 months, that can be painful for everybody. And so we really took that into account going to the last budget year and going into this year, kind of really challenging people to stay as flat as they can with things that we couldn't avoid and then focusing on how we were going to sustain moving forward. So all those charts are great, but I think this is really a better look at what the city actually buys and how this has impacted us over the years. So an ambulance, and I know we've talked about this, and council has actually pre-approved an ambulance purchase because of the wait time and because of cost increases. So we're paying, you know, 40% more than we were just a few years ago. So this is where we really see it and just so that, you know, to give you an idea is it's great looking at it on a global or even a statewide scale, but when you look at it like this, these are real dollars and this is real things that we purchase on a regular basis that we're impacted by. So looking at citywide, it gets a little bit confusing on this one, but revenues $108 million. This does include transfers, which we'll talk about in a minute. Net of transfers $94 million. On the expenditure side, $142 million and net of transfers $128 million. So transfers matter because anytime we move money from one fund to another, it's revenue of one fund expensed to the other. So it's not cash twice. So if we were to count it twice, it would be double accounting, which we don't want to do, but it still matters to the overall whenever you're adding all the funds together with all the revenues and all the expenses. The reason expenditures are typically higher than your revenues is because capital projects roll from one year to the next. So we'll receive bond funds in one year or a revenue funding source of any kind in one year, but that project doesn't get fully expended in that year. So you'll see higher revenue in one year and a higher expense in another. But typically, if we have a lot of ongoing capital projects, you'll see it look like So citywide revenues by category, again, this is just kind of a look at where money comes from. I pulled the capital projects out of this because, again, that revenue is strange because of where it hits. If I were to pull the revenue in for capital projects, these numbers would be skewed because it can be so big. And so things like property tax or sales tax may be a really small percent, when really when it comes to operations, that's just not the true look at it. So I looked at it just kind of as a norm, but this is how '25 is budgeted by category. So services are going to include all of water and sewer services, emergency medical services, solid waste, that's going to be the landfill only. Remember that your curbside solid waste fees are pass-through, so the city is just an administrator of that. So we do keep an administrative fee, but we don't get the revenue from that. That's, that is a contracted service. Parks and Rec revenue, where it's applicable, it's going to be golf, KSP, some aquatics, you know, that's more of a community service thing and we're going to talk about this a little bit more later, and then a little bit from the library and a few other smaller fees. Property taxes includes taxes from current and previous years. So anything that we budget for current year based on this year's tax year levy is in current year. Everything else is in prior year and that is estimated based on historical collections that we've received over the years. But that, those prior years are counted in the overall property tax budget. Sales tax, 1% of tax of levy on taxable items purchased. Remember that the city gets 1% and EIC gets half a cent and so that's how EIC is funded, is through sales tax. Franchise fees, that's going to be any utility company that utilizes in city streets or other infrastructure to do their business. So they pay a franchise fee for that as we talk about with K-Pub and some of our cable providers and our phone providers and those things. Intergovernmental, that is your money coming in from other governments, from the county for our EMS contract and then also from Curval ISD for our shared service with the School Resource Officer Program in which they do a reimbursement for actual labor expenses related to that. Permits and fees, that's going to be development services, parkland, and some miscellaneous other small fees, and then transfers and again, we talked about that. This is just a little bit different look at expenses by fund and how this plays out for the '25 budget. So this includes transfers as again, it does matter when you're counting revenue for each fund when budgeting. For transferring money into a fund, it does count in the revenue for the overall fund. So this just gives you a little bit of a look at how we are planning or proposing to spend money in the upcoming year. Okay. Any questions on that before we move on to general fund because general fund's going to be a little bit more in-depth?
Resource officers, I mean, I know everybody's tightening their belts and stuff, but I know that we had talked about a couple of resource officers floating between the four elementary schools and that they were going to take a look at adding more later. Are we still with the same?
We have four budgeted, but do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, they've instituted a school marshal program last year to fill in those holes.
Okay.
So we balance between four school resource officers and the school marshals.
Okay.
That the school's hiring.
Any other questions on the previous? Thank you.
Okay. So we'll jump into the general fund. So this is the city's largest fund and the fund where most property tax is collected and provides most services. So most of the things that the general public uses in this fund, so public safety, which is going to be fire, police, EMS, and multitude of other services that are in there are funded out of the general fund. So it's currently balanced at 39.41 and that is compared to last year at 37.6. So 4.7% increase in budget overall. I can tell you that most of that is personnel or sustainability, which we're going to talk about a little bit more. So I brought this to the table just really for presentation purposes. So, you know, we rolled out Balancing Act this year. It was kind of late in the year when we rolled it out because of when we acquired that software and then, of course, getting a little bit later start with strategic planning and those things. But this is a tax receipt that's actually pulled out of our Balancing Act software and I really encourage people to go to this site and use it with your own property value and you can see based on the budget that's proposed, how your money is split up and what exactly your taxes are paying for based on the different expenditures of the different departments. This is general fund only, of course, because that's where your property tax goes. And so this is based on an average home value right now, which according to Kirkcat is about $343,000. So that's based on this. So within this, then I put the link at the bottom there and it's also online for anybody that wants to see it, but you can go in and just take a look at how your property taxes are distributed among the services that are provided in the general fund. So pretty interesting tool. Taking a look at revenue, so overall, of course, the general fund is balanced. So revenue 4.7% higher than fiscal year's '24 original budget. The '25 budget does account for the mid-year budget amendment, but we didn't compare it to the amended one. We compared to the original, so you could see compared to what we actually did last year in the budget compared to this year. Property tax, not including prior years, $976,000 more. Now, the way that breaks out is the rate proposed the same in the general fund for fiscal year '24 as it was last year, actually total fund, I should say. New value is about $37 million. That's going to account for $206,000 in revenue from new value. And then property tax from prior years, again, it's based on historical. That's not included in the rate and new value is not included to calculate the rate either. Now, one thing that we'll talk about as we go forward, I'll go ahead and mention, is that new value from last year was actually higher than new value from this tax year. And so last year's new value was about $47 million and that is included in the rate for this year. So new value is not the first year. The second year, it does roll into your overall property value and get counted there. So sales tax, we're going to talk about this a little bit going forward, but we did change trajectory here just based on what we've seen in the last few months. We're not seeing an uptick. For a little while, we were seeing some future payments and some prior payments and it was really hard to get a good handle on what was happening. But sales tax has been leveling. We've been talking about that for over a year and we're not seeing big enough rebounds for me to say that there's going to be an increase. So we went and reduced the sales tax budget for fiscal year '25 by $313,000, so 3% less than '24. '23 and '24 were budgeted exactly the same. Intergovernmental revenue, a little bit of an increase there, but again, Kirk County Agreement for Fire and EMS, the increase there is based on CPI and that's spelled out in the agreement. So I think one of the comments that was returned on Balancing Act was that we should increase that. And so I wish there were a way for me to respond or see the comments. I can see the comments, but not necessarily where they came from. So we're going to work on that to see if someone would like a response. How does that look as far as they're able to reach out to us and we can actually answer those questions? But we do an increase annually on that based on CPI and that's spelled out in the agreement. Services, we are expecting an increase in EMS revenue, but that's from volume, not rates. And so Chief Maloney does a really good job of tracking volume, call volume and how that equates on the billing side. And it's leveled. If you remember back during COVID, it really plummeted and we just weren't seeing the volume on EMS and so we reduced EMS revenues. And the last few years, that's really leveled and become pretty, pretty reliable as far as his metrics and so he's continuing to track that. Recreation, the reason that you see a big decrease there, almost $800,000. Remember, we're going to be closing the golf course for six months. And so for the revenue loss, we also have expense reduction and we'll talk about that as we go forward. But we'll be closing that for approximately six months and then we'll be closing the Olympic pool for a full year. And while the Olympic pool doesn't generate a lot of revenue, it still is revenue whenever we do the general fund budget. But again, we'll have reduction in expenses there as well. And then interest and miscellaneous, 122%, looks like an awful big number. It's about $530,000, but this is from original budget. So coming into fiscal year '24, the rates were just coming up. I mean, it was really, really just hard for us to say, hey, we can, we can budget on this. We're always conservative on interest because it's not a big dollar amount in overall revenue. So we don't want to put, you know, a lot of, a lot of pressure on that, that revenue source. But we have been capitalizing on our high interest rate environment and we've talked about that and we will talk about that more as we start talking about sustainability and how we're going to make that work for us going in the future. We budgeted for fiscal year '25 a lower interest rate than we're actually receiving right now, just based on indicators and what we're kind of seeing. We are seeing a little bit of leveling on the investments. We're going to see, you know, short-term investments are going to start dropping and our long-term stuff is going to start going up and that's, that's just kind of the way the market works. So really watching that as we go forward. Any questions on any of that stuff before we jump into property tax? Dalton, you have any, staying on any of that? Okay. So everyone's favorite topic. And the reason I put these definitions in here, and I don't think that I'm going to try and explain Senate Bill 2 right now, but I really did want these in there for anyone who is interested in it. And again, if anyone is interested in learning how we calculate property tax and how we come up with a revenue or a rate in the scenarios that we look at, happy to walk through that in, in an offline conversation if you'd like to. But basically, the important part of this is, you know, what each of these things mean. And so our MNO, our maintenance and operation rate, that supports the general fund. So services that citizens use every day, police, fire, streets, maintenance of parks and facilities, community events, and all those kinds of things are wrapped up in there. Interest and sinking fund, that's the debt portion. So when we receive funding, our, our property tax revenues from the county, it automatically is divided into two funds. So the money for debt never sees the general fund and vice versa. So it goes directly to that fund, so it's allocated correctly. And at the end of the year, if there are any over-collections on the debt fund, then it's used to offset the rate going into the next year, which is what happened in this year. So you'll, that's why you'll see a reduction in the debt rate. The no new revenue rate, so that rate is the tax. If we were to set a no new revenue rate, we would basically receive the same exact revenue on the same exact properties. So there's a lot of variables there, but it's apples-to-apples comparison. It would be the same properties receiving no new money to the general fund for that, if we were to adopt that rate. And then the voter approval rate, that's the maximum rate that could be set by council without, without going to voter approval. So it's 3.5% over the maintenance and operations, no new revenue rate. And that gets really tricky. I put the formula in there if anybody's interested. And I, again, I can certainly walk you through that. But basically, the total tax rate minus the debt, whatever is left from that is used for maintenance and operations for the general fund. So debt has to be paid first before we can do anything. Okay. So a little bit on the property tax process, and I know we've talked about this more extensively, but I kind of wanted to just give you a little look. So we receive preliminary rolls beginning in April from Kirkad, and we start working on estimations. And it really is just that until then. So we're looking at historical data. We're looking at revenue increases year over year, excuse me, based on multitude of factors, new revenue, those kinds of things. Percent of increase to complete, to total values. There's, there's a lot of factors there. So we update those throughout the month, and Sharon is really good about my craziness and saying, hey, can I have another one? Can I have another one? And so she'll usually send me one about once a month. And then once they really start working on protests, I'll get one every other week. And we'll start watching what the values are doing and how that, the protests are impacting that, the value. So on the 24th, Jacob and I had a bet, and he won, but we got certified roll about 10 till 5 on the 24th. And so we were happy that we got it on the 24th instead of on the 25th. But, so I don't like to say I lost something, but that one I did. Then we worked with Bob and his team at the Tax Assessor Office to work through the tax rate calculation worksheet, which if any of you have reviewed it, it's a lot of fun to work through. And we settled on that on the 29th, so that was Monday afternoon. And then the next couple of days, we really spent coming up with scenarios and saying, okay, we know what our no new revenue rate is. We know what our voter approval rate is. We know what our proposed general fund expenditures are. How does that look? And what are the different scenarios that we could potentially look at? And we came up with about eight, I think. Talked through them with Dalton. I think we brought you back four or five to look at because of the impact between, we had gotten so, so narrow between it. There just wasn't a lot of impact. So brought those back to you guys, made adjustments to the general fund. Of course, we had to adjust sales tax at that point, so that did have an impact on some other things that we moved around a little bit. And then got it to balance. We adjusted the budget document, updated all the graphs, and then bring this back to you on the 31st, which we had to submit to the city secretary at that time and online. So I think the biggest point here, I think, for me to make, and the reason I wanted to address this, is the city charter requires us to file our budget on the 20, on the 31st. There's no provision for if it's Friday, if it's Sunday, if it's whatever, it is the 31st. And so depending on when we receive the roll, depending on when we receive the property tax calculation and that settled, that really narrows down your timeframe to do all these little... So when we requested from the Charter Commission to add an extension to that, it wasn't for lack of wanting you to see the budget. It was simply so that we could produce the most accurate tool that we could provide on that, so.
Yeah, Mayor Council, and to touch on to that, you know, with the, with the filing, you know, yeah, a week is a week. But what makes the charter so unique and where Julie and her team and the departments and everybody have done such a phenomenal job on it, especially, I mean, her team above all, is they have to do it to the GFOA standard. So that budget book that, that was received, even though they're building on it throughout the budget process, that's a, that's a quick turnaround. That's a lot. Usually those don't come around until this time right now, so two, two weeks later sometimes. So that, that's what ma, makes that, you know, really challenging. Nothing we can do about it now, but again, really just want to throw them a lot of credit. That is a busy, busy week for them, you know, talking Julie off the ledge and everybody. So thank, thank you for her and her team for everything that they do on that one.
More than one ledge from time to time, but, but it's okay. It, it really is fun. It's just a lot to get done in a short period of time. So if you find mistakes in the budget book, and you will, they're not going to be numerical, they're going to be grammatical. And that's just the way it is. And so we'll edit that and correct that before the final book comes out, of course, which should be sometime first part of December, when we'll, when we'll finish the final one, because we'll have to finish year-end before we can get there. Okay. So more on property tax. So this is just a look at historical rates. And the reason for the chart on the right is to really show when Senate Bill 2 was enacted, so that was in 2019. So in 2021 is really when we saw the impact of that. And basically, it changed from what used to be the effective tax rate to what is now the no new revenue rate. And when they did that, it limited cities to a 3.5% over the no new revenue rate adoption of a tax rate. It used to be 8%. When that happened, we also had multiple other things going on. So we had, we were in the middle of COVID. We saw appraisals jump for a multitude of reasons. We had a war going on. So all these things that really drove that. So to really say what the impact of that was is really hard. I'm hoping that we're seeing some normal, and we'll talk about that a little bit in a minute, and the why, I hope that I'm right about that. But the, the historical rates on the right, as far as the shading is the rate, the first line there is the Senate Bill 2 that enacted the new property tax laws. And then the 2023 budget, of course, the jump in the rate right there is on the debt side, not the MNO, but that is when we, the voters approved the public safety bonds. And so that's what you're seeing there on the jump. The graph on the bottom, it looks like I cut a little bit of it off when I snipped it here. But this just kind of gives you a distribution of where your property taxes went in fiscal year '24. So if you were a city taxpayer, this is how your property taxes were distributed and where you paid those to in '24. Now, I don't have updated rates, but of course, we'll provide this in the, the final book just so that you can see how you, when you pay property taxes, where that goes. So this one is a different look at assessed value. So we're just talking about jumps in assessed value, and the light blue line here is the rate. And, and I questioned myself earlier on the 2022 rate, but that is percent change. And so again, the 2023 jump there is the public safety facility bonds, and so that is correct. And what you're seeing, the dark blue lines is valuation over time. So basically, and what was kind of even surprising to me when I went back this far was between 2016 and 2020, we had like a 20% increase. And then from 2020 to 2024, it was 49%. So our values really did jump. And I know, you know, there's caps in there, and there's exemptions, and there's homestead. But, but the reality is, that is what our values did. And so, you know, we do consider those things. And what we're really hoping for is I've seen from '24s compared to '23s, that increase went down. And then our increase this year was 5% over '24 compared to even the 10% over last year. And so that does include that $47 million that we talked about in new value. So without looking at individual properties, it would be hard for me to say, you know, what individuals are going to experience. But it's going to be likely less than the 5% because of that new value being added to the roll. So we're hoping that this is some sort of indication of stabilization of values, because that'll be a lot easier for us to budget in the future if we can somewhat have an idea of what values are going to do. It's really hard when they jump around all the time for council to adopt a rate that makes sense for the taxpayers. So this is just a couple of different looks. So the property, the chart on the left, the dark blue, what that is, is levied dollars on non-frozen properties. And then the light blue is actual dollars from frozen taxes. And the reason this is important is because you know that property owners over the age of 65 have the ability to have their taxes frozen. And while that's not a bad thing, it's a benefit for living here in the city, and many cities have this. And those property tax, those property owners bring money in different ways. And so we have to, the point, though, is it does impact when you're looking at the rate. And so you have to look at if that property were taxed at full value, what would that be? And what would the impact to the rate be? And so we look at all of those factors. So, you know, once that is frozen, it's frozen in time. And so Kirkad calculates the dollars collected from frozen taxes, and, and we add that into our total levy. And then the one on the right is value distribution of assessed value. So this is, this is before total exemptions are pulled out, just so that you can kind of see how the value distributes. And there, there's a mistake on this slide. So the value in the, the dark green there that says 3.9 billion, that is our total assessed value. That's not just that piece of it. So our total assessed value, 3.9 billion, 317 million total exemptions, and then 1 billion is frozen. So that just kind of tells you how the value is split out whenever we're looking at rate scenarios. And then kind of the last piece is new value, which we just talked about. And you can see that 47 million in last year. That was a pretty big year. And we do expect '26 to be probably a bigger year with completion of some recent development that's going on. And then, you know, housing that we're, that we're seeing start coming up, not just with Lennar, but in other areas too. And so we're expecting '26 to have a bigger new value. Then, you know, keep in mind, as that value grows, then your rate should go down. I mean, potentially, that's, that's what your no new revenue rate should do. When values go up, your rate is going to go down. So in 2024, 1.2% of the '25 increase was because of that new value. So that's, if I had to make an educated guess, that most property owners are seeing between a 3% and 4% increase in value. And that's without, again, digging into commercial and a lot of other factors there that just, there's no possible way for us to do that. But I wanted you to see this because '25 does have less dollars in new value than '24, but we do expect that to be bigger in '26. So property tax rate as it's proposed. So our no new revenue rate calculation for 2025 is .4076. So that is the MNO, no new revenue rate. If we multiplied that times 3.5% that we're allowed, then our maximum voter approval rate for MNO would be 4218. So that's the calculation to get the voter approval rate on the MNO side. The INS or the debt service, of course, is 1406, and that is a set rate. That has to be paid before we do anything else. So whatever rate is adopted, the debt rate comes out of it, and the rest of that is to the MNO side. So you can see there, the proposed rate of 5595 for fiscal year '25, that is exactly the same as fiscal year '24. Now, the MNO, you'll see that went up just a little bit, way less than a penny, but the debt went down equally. So, you know, if all things are equal, of course, and we know that that's not always the case with value changes and those kinds of things, then there would be zero impact. Now, I'm not going to get into the calculation at the bottom, but I did some math on what it would be, you know, potentially if someone had a 3% or 5%. And it's pretty small, but I did want to make sure that everyone recognizes, we know there are increase in value. So we're not in denial that we can say, well, the property tax rate is the same, so no one is going to see a dollar more on the property taxes. That, that is not the case, but that could be the case for some people, because maybe someone's tax value, their valuation was the same, or maybe even ruse. I don't know. Anybody have any questions on property tax? I know that is a lot of information. Dalton, you have anything to add to property tax? Okay. We're going to move on. We talked about this, so we won't go into this a whole lot, but this just gives you a picture of what sales tax is doing now and what we're projecting that it will do. Again, keep in mind, we're in August, and so we really won't know what '24s rolls up to be until November because we have a two-month lag on sales tax. So it's really hard to project that. We're just going off of what a 12-month rolling average is. I can tell you that two years ago, our 12-month rolling average was in the double digits, and now it's 1% to flat, depending on which month it is. So that is an indication to us of what sales tax is doing, so we just want to be conservative there. We hope that we're conservative enough. We've talked to other cities, also looked at, you know, lots of forums and what people are doing nationwide, and this is a trend in areas that saw large increases during COVID. So with that being said, if you were here during COVID, you know that we thought the bottom was going to fall out, and it didn't. And so when you have 15 to 20% growth, that's not a sustainable, reasonable expectation. So 20% on 20% is not reasonable with the kind of, you know, we have 1% growth in our community. So I don't really look at it as we're losing, we're leveling. And so we're still almost 40% ahead of what we were in 2019, and I use 2019 because that's the last normal that I can refer to. Yes, there's been some growth, but there hasn't been 40% growth. So that, that tells me that we have a healthy community, but, you know, inflation is impacting everybody, so we know that. So on the expense side, the reason I wanted to bring this slide is because when, when proposed budgets came in in March, departmental operating budgets, and that includes operational and new requests, were right at 41.5 million. And so whenever we worked through the process over the next few months, we're balanced right now at 39.4. So that's a pretty big cut. And really, what I'll say is, short of personnel, everything is kind of flat. And so I'll walk you through what those expenses look like here in a minute. There are some increases in some areas in which we'll talk through. And then, of course, a little bit of impact for golf closure and that, but it's, it's not enough that it's going to really impact the entire fund. And we spent a lot of time diving into making sure that we had as little impact as possible from those closures. So we had new personnel requests to the tune of 13. We actually, and you can see those listed there, we actually budgeted for three. However, one of those is going to be assumed by a reduction labor in another area. So really, an overall, I'm sorry, we're adding four, but the overall new FTEs is three. And two of those are specifically dedicated to public safety facility for maintenance and janitorial at that new facility. And those are budgeted for partial year only. And so Ashley and her team are kind of, kind of assess once they open and see what those needs really are. I know they've been having a lot of meetings on what does the landscaping look like? And how do we reduce the maintenance as much as we can? And what's our day-to-day look like in janitorial? So they've spent a lot of time just diving into that. And right now, I think they're making their best educated guess on what that's going to look like. And so we'll reassess that after that facility opens. So Dalton, you want to speak to EMS or?
No, not really. Really kind of keep it simple. I know we have a lot. You know, there was a lot of revamped positions that we did. You know, we cut an executive director position out, and we kind of put those into, you know, other positions. You know, we were able to revamp a, one of the garage positions, which was kind of an inventory position, which is now a procurement purchasing position, so we can, you know, have a better policy and get, get better policies on our purchasing and procurement program. So that's now in finance. So just kind of a lot of leveling on, on some positions. We brought in heavy equipment operators to more of the entry-level side if they have a CDL. So really just tried to address some of the retention stuff, which indirectly impacts the recruiting. Fire and EMS took a really, they did a, looked at some of their business model on it. You know, they had asked for six personnel or quite a few personnel. We knew that was going to be challenging with some of, you know, some of it. So we really kind of challenged them to dive into it, get creative, and Chief really did. Both chiefs did. They really dove into looking at a career path for EMS, which is, you know, really over 90% of our, our call volume on the medical side of things. And so just did a really great job on it, running pretty flat. But any questions, be happy to answer.
Questions?
I don't have a question, Your Honor, or Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm going back to team court. I want to say something just real quick that Julie said about janitorial staff and Ashley. Ashley is our Parks and Recreation Director. But I did not know this until I came on council, that her staff is also responsible for all janitorial and upkeep of all city buildings. So if somebody hears that and they're like going, well, why is Parks and Rec doing that? That is why, because that's another task that Ashley's been tasked with, so thank you for that. Just clarification, for Your Honor.
Who's next?
Okay. So we'll move on. So this is kind of where I'll walk you through some of the things that you'll see some variances, but how at the end, they, they come out the way I said they are. So personnel up 6.9% compared to original budget. So fiscal year '25 does account for the mid-year COLA that you guys approved back in April. So that's part of that. Also, of course, we had an increase in group health, which, you know, we know what a grueling process that was, and, and that came back, you know, much better than we expected based on the first bids that Kim and her team worked through. So we were really happy the way that came back. But of personnel, public safety in the general fund accounts for 63%, and that's outlined very clearly in Curval 2050 and, and what citizens expect for our priorities to be. But I think it really is kind of important, and I joke with Chief about bringing ice cream to my office if, or I'm going to start charging him. But we, there's a lot of support that goes into those things too, which is not considered in that. So what that number really is, is much bigger than 63% when you consider IT's time and then, you know, HR and legal and all the components that support Public Safety Division. So it really is a top priority in the way we budget and then also in the way we do things and services within the city. Supplies, that shows down 8.9%. I'm going to talk about that with you in a minute. Maintenance up 3.2%. That does include our software agreements that we have throughout the city or throughout the general fund anyway. Services down 2.7%. And again, this is going to align and make sense here in a minute. We did have some savings in network services, so Charvy really did a good job of going out and saying, hey, what do we use in? What do we need? And then there was some, some cost savings in some areas there where we reduced some phone expense just based on some internal things that we did that was a pretty substantial savings for us. And then the biggest thing that we did this year, and really, it's again for transparency and to see exactly what we're spending, is we took supplies and services out of those individual line items, and we moved them into their own line items for special events. So each of our special events that is a substantial, has a substantial cost. So lighted parade, you know, I don't want to go into all of them right now, but there, there's about six that we really separated out. And the reason you're seeing that increase in other is because we created expense line items within the other category for all those special events. So if someone says, hey, So if someone says, hey, what did you spend on haunted ghoul pool? We can tell you. We don't have to go to supplies and see what we spent there and maintenance and see what we spent there and all those different categories. We aligned them to where, that way, we can really see what the priorities are. Ashley and her team can track them to say, hey, this is what the turnout was. This is how we feel about this event. This is a new event we'd like to add. It really gives us the capability to dig down and say, what are we providing to the community? How is the response to that? And what do we need to be doing going forward? Either do we need to increase something that's really good turnout? Do we need to look at new, you know, new events and those kind of things? So that's why we did that. So if you take the differences there, again, personnel was our largest increase, which that's kind of typical in looking at any budget. So this is a crisis by department, and we don't, we won't talk through all of these. But again, you can see public safety is the largest part of departments. The one thing I think to point out is, while fire and EMS is $10.9 million, they do have offsetting revenue. So we do take that into account when we're looking at general fund revenue. So one of the things that can be a little bit confusing about government finance is revenues are captured by fund. So it really doesn't matter what the revenue source is within that fund. It is taken to the fund. So water fund revenue is in the water fund, and general fund revenue is in the general fund. It supports all operations regardless of where it comes from. Street and engineering, of course, a top priority. And then, again, with parks, 4.5 million, so that's 11% of our total general fund budget. They do have an offsetting revenue this year of about a million dollars. Typically, that's closer to $2 million, but of course, no golf. So that's a pretty big hit. However, we do have, you know, reduction in expenses there as well. But I think the important thing, and Jeff kind of hit on this, is to point out that 2 million of that 4.5 million is for parks and facilities maintenance. So that's not, you know, dedicated to events or, you know, new stuff in the park. That's specifically maintaining our buildings throughout, maintaining our grounds throughout, and then maintaining all of the parks. So I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, more than half of their budget really is dedicated for that. This slide is kind of messy, and I was going to change it earlier, but I just didn't have time. I think the important thing here is on asset replacement is that, you know, if you've been here for a few years, this has been a focus. And we've just said we've got to be intentional about funding our asset replacement fund. So, you know, this year, we've kind of aligned with what we came and told you guys several months ago. And, you know, our asset team has been working really hard to figure out exactly what we have going on, what does our replacement schedule look like? So this outlines what we plan to replace in the upcoming year. And then we did add just a couple of additional assets, which one of them is a utility vehicle for Curville Tronor Park, a tractor. But what I'm going to say about that too is, over the last year, we've done a lot of rightsizing. And so if you were to look at the revenue side, what you'll see is we sold a lot of stuff that we weren't using. And then each division really went in and said, do we need a 3/4 ton truck or do we need a Colorado? Do we need a four-wheel-drive truck? Probably not. It snows here once every two years. You know, do, what do we need? And so we got rid of things that we didn't need, brought in things that we do need, and then have a plan over the course of the next few years to really right-size and put the right vehicles and the right equipment in the right departments. And that's going to save us money in the long run from insurance to maintenance and those kind of things. Just buying things that last longer and then making plans for those going forward. I did put a bottom about future considerations, and it's because, you know, we don't ever want to say we didn't talk about this. We know we have ambulance needs. We know that we have dump trucks out there that have got to be replaced. These are big-ticket items that, as we move forward. So when you see a fund balance in this fund, it's intentional. We're trying to save, we're trying to tuck away so that we don't have to say, I'm sorry, Council, but we need X, because we don't have a choice but to replace this. So we're really looking forward and trying to say, what does this look like today, tomorrow, five years from now? And how are we going to fund it? And if it's something where we think we have a potential debt funding, we're talking to you about it two years ahead of time, not talking to you about it at the time of, so that we can make a plan for that. So that's, we're really trying to build that fund balance up enough to help us offset some of that potential debt in the future. Any questions on general fund at all? I know general fund is a lot, and that's not near the detail that the budget book outlines. And again, you know, if anyone wants to talk about this offline, I'm happy to do that.
Does anyone have a question tonight?
What did we wind up with percentage-wise on the insurance increase? Kim?
3.7.
And what had it been the prior year? Wasn't it 13 something or something?
Yes, yeah, that's where it ended up. Yes, ma'am.
Staff has been really hustling, trying to get those numbers down so we could keep that rate reasonable. So thank you for that.
Really?
Okay, so let's jump into water fund. So water fund is an enterprise fund for everyone who knows. Great if you don't, the water fund operates like a business. So property tax does not support this fund in any way. The only funds that support the water fund are monies coming in from services. And so there's also some taps and some new development things, you know, that new development pays for and those kind of things. But for regular maintenance and operations, it's supported, is self-supported by its revenue. So I think that's important to know. So I found it interesting, and, you know, we do a lot of analysis in our department and going back and looking at, what did we say then compared to what we're saying now and those kind of things? And February, I guess it's been, when we were considering revenue bonds, we brought a water forecast presentation. And our water forecast presentation said we were going to need about $6.3 million in '25 in the water fund. And it's right at 6.8 something. So I feel like, given things we didn't know then, that's pretty close. And a lot of the differential there between the 6.3 and the 6.8 is sustainability items that we'll talk about. So those are, yes, I'm going to not say, I'm not going to call them extra. I'm going to call them things we need to do. However, they're give points, you know, and unfortunately, sustainability is a lot of times where things, you know, get pushed. And sometimes that's why we find ourselves in the situations that we do, is because we're not saving and planning ahead. So just thought that was interesting as we do projections. So the fiscal year '25 revenues assume rate increases to both water and sewer rates, and we'll talk about that in more detail. Trina worked, I can't even tell you how many hours, updating water model, which is kind of an ongoing process based on what's happening, what consumers are using. And we thought last year we were pretty close, but we could not anticipate, you know, drought restrictions for as long as we've been in them. And so what we kind of did this year is said, look, we're going to dial back our dependency on irrigation. And really, we need to anyway. I mean, the community message has been conserve, and so if we're going to do that, then we have to do it, you know, on our side too, even with our modeling. So we pulled 30% out of our irrigation compared to last year's model for the '25 budget. So we took our irrigation dependency down 30%. That matters because those revenues have to come from somewhere, because the operational costs of the water fund are what they are. Outside of sustainability pieces, transfers to CIP and those kind of things, operational costs. And David and I, David Brer and I, who's the utilities director, have met multiple times and talked through, hey, we're going to miss. I mean, FY '24 is potentially going to have a million-dollar miss, and we know that. However, we've looked and dug at what can we cut and what can we save? Operational costs are operational costs. There's not fluff built into the water fund. So anyway, we changed our method up a little bit so that going forward, it's A, more conservative from a consumption model. And then also, you know, gives us the opportunity that if we do have a good year, then we can look at that from, you know, adding to sustainability in the future. So operational requests, and we had no new full-time requests in the water fund, but we do have six vacancies. And we continue to talk about vacancies and workforce shortages, and the water fund definitely has its share. And so typically, we won't add FTEs until we know we can fill the ones that we have. So, you know, we don't want to budget for something when we already have shortfall. So, and departments know that, and they're very good about, you know, being conservative. And, I mean, why would we add if we can't, we can't sustain what we have now? So they're really doing some retention efforts, as Dalton talked about earlier. And I know he and Kim have been working really hard on some things that we can do to focus on keeping the employees that we have. And then what do we do to, you know, get the ones hired that we need to hire and then maintain those in the future? I won't go into these, but this really just kind of outlines how water fund is different by category. You know, your services are going to be a little bit different. And then, of course, in the water fund, we have capital where we don't have a lot of capital in the general fund because most of those, equipment and rolling stock is budgeted in our asset replacement funds respectively. However, in the water fund, anything new that grows into, goes into the ground is collectively capitalized at year-end. So if we install new meters because we have a new subdivision, those are considered a new asset, and so then we capitalize together. So that's why you'll see some capital in the water fund that you don't see in the general fund. Also, on the transfer side, that's important in the water fund, and this is true in the general fund to a degree as well. But your asset replacement fund and your debt service fund in the water fund are part of the water fund. So even though we show them separately for budget, just so you can really see how monies are spent at the end of the year for financial reporting, those all come back together. So when we do have transfers out to another fund within the water fund, at the end of the year, those come back together for financial reporting. But it just makes it easier to see how we're spending money, and especially on the asset replacement that's not as consistent. Operations fairly consistent, assets can be up and down, and we really don't want to see those ebbs and flows really on the operational side. So that's why we do that. So expenditures on the water fund, and I started backwards because, again, water fund is very consistent with expenses, and you'll see that. So smaller increase in personnel on the water fund, 3.8%. There's some reasons there. We had a couple of really long-tenured employees who retired. And then, of course, we have vacancies. And so when we have vacancies and turnover, then we're bringing people in at more entry-level rates instead of sustaining those rates where people are getting merit increases, so you're seeing a smaller increase there. We did have a reduction in travel and training. We saw this on the general fund side too, and this was an area that when we asked staff, you know, hey, where can you give? You know, that was an area that they give. We have more online training capability now, so we're really trying to take advantage of anything that keeps us home as much as we can unless there's really value in going out or mandates in going out and getting the face-to-face training. So this is just kind of a breakdown of how things were. Increase in supplies, that's going to be tools and equipment. There's some replacement things in there within that tools and equipment budget that's below our capitalization threshold, that falls into supplies. Decrease in maintenance, but that's primarily because we do have a decrease in vehicle maintenance, I can say, because we have done a better job of replacing things we're not spending as much money on, equipment maintenance, things like that, as we were. And there's a few other things that they're doing in there with the maintenance that's not new. Services, that's going to be utilities, but there's also insurance in there, so liability in auto is in there. So you'll see services increase due to that most of the time, especially when you have a fund that doesn't have as many dollars. And then capital, of course, and that's new things going into the ground. And this is just expenses by category, just to give you a little bit different look of how things lay out over the years. Obviously, in '23, you can see where it jumped, again, with petroleum-based products and the impact there to '23. But since then, I mean, we're level or flat. And so where the increase really is here is in personnel, which is small in this fund, and then also in your transfers out, and that's your sustainability pieces to both CIP and to asset replacement. So you can really see that those costs really are fixed, and those are actuals every year up until the '24. And we did include the amended budget, so you could see as close to actuals as possible as looking at one year to the next, so. And then on the asset replacement side, same kind of thing, just telling you what we plan to replace. A couple of new additions here at the water plant, so membrane expansion, and I am not the one to ask about that. I just know that it's making our TTHM situation better on the filtration side and then adding some strainers. So those are the only new additions to this. Everything else is replacement. I did put the years on things, and we didn't talk about this in the general fund, but we actually have a special operations unit in PD that's like a 1992, I think. And so that's about a million-dollar piece of equipment that's on the horizon. And then you can see that we're now replacing things to 2005, 2006. So that's promising compared to some of the things we're replacing last year and the year before that were barely 2000, 2002. So I would say on the asset replacement front, we really are making some progress. So this is a look at historical base rates, and this is important for a couple of reasons. So in 2019, we did a rate study, and that rate study came back and said, hey, you guys don't have a sustainable enough revenue source. You need to increase the base rate. Well, we did that moderately in 2020 with the council that was at the time, and we made some adjustments. But when we made that adjustment, we added 1,000 gallons of consumption to the base rate. So we did a base rate increase of $3.18, and at the time, 1,000 gallons of water cost $3.41. So pretty small net increase on that on the base rate. There were some tier increases, which I have displayed for anyone who wants to see those as well. So you can see that increase there in 2020, and that was primarily because we changed the structure and increased the base rate on water and sewer. And then moving forward, we did not do increases in '21, and we all know what was happening then. Very small increases in '22. We did do some increases last year, though not super significant. And then this year, we do have some much larger base rate increases. And again, that's going to go back to sustainability, number one, and stability of revenue sources. And so, you know, when we're facing drought stages like we are now, and then also just being responsible stewards, you know, in conserving water, we take 30% of our irrigation out. The costs are still there. So this is just a look at historical rates, and I put these in here kind of for information purposes. But you can see the jump there in fiscal year '20. And then also, as I said, we did include 1,000 gallons. And we looked at multiple scenarios when we talked about increases. We looked at, you know, do we increase gallons of water to the base rate? What is the impact of that? Do we change the tiers? So we did look at a lot of different things and then presented council, as you know, with three different rate scenarios. So we do have an outside firm that actually did our rate study in 2019, and we reached out to them again this year and asked them just to do an update of our other water providers in our region, just to see kind of where we were before we jumped off into talking about rates. And so you can see that Curville is among the lowest, and it's really hard to compare apples to apples. In fact, nearly impossible because everybody's water production is different, everyone's wastewater treatment is different. So really hard to compare, but we just kind of wanted to see, just in general, how do we rate as compared to rates overall? And so still really low, and even with our proposed rate, it moves us up one spot. Now, that's without consideration for what these other guys are doing, because we just don't know that yet. Preliminary revenues, so historically, you can see water sales on the bottom, sewer sales on the top. And then all the things on the top or really top are just little things. This fund is 97% consumption-based. So again, our revenue comes from services that are provided through this fund, through water and wastewater. And then obviously, there's a few, you know, sale of meters and those kind of things that are about 3% of our total fund. And so when we base it on consumption, it's really hard to predict and really hard to, we know what we need, but we don't know, you know, how the revenue is going to fall out at the end of the year. And the more tiered we have it and the more dependent we are on those higher tiers, then the further we are going to be away from being able to come up with a good model and then also being able to predict budget, because we just don't know what consumption's going to look like. So here's rainfall by calendar year. I think this is important because the red on the bottom is looking at a 30-year average. So for every area, I believe it's USDA comes out with, what is an average? And they look at 30 years. So you can see where our 30-year average is, and then you can see year-over-year. And if you look at, you know, '24 to date, '23, '22, I'm substantially below normal rainfall. We've been blessed, I think, in the last few weeks to have the rain that we've had. And hopefully, you know, we're going to get some more. But I think we have to consider this when we're looking forward, and what does that mean to consumption and then revenue? And I know, you know, saying revenues can be, you know, a dirty word. Nobody wants to hear, well, we have to make money. It's not about making money, it's about covering the cost of the system that we need to be able to provide services that citizens expect. And really, that's our job, is just to prevent you with the facts. And whatever guidance you give is, of course, how we're going to react. So this budget includes, proposed increase will provide $425,000 transfer to CIP, and then will also include $750,000 transfer to asset replacement. So that's going to be rolling stock, basic everyday infrastructure, those kind of things. Then, again, 30% reduction in irrigation consumption. And then you can see the different increases that we have there. So $4.84 on the base rate to water, $4.54 base rate on the sewer. Zero increase on tiered rates for the average consumer. So that's going to be between 1,001 and 6,000 gallons, so no increase there on the tier. And then a little 18-cent volumetric rate on 1,000 gallons of sewer. And what you'll see, if you go back to that revenue graph, is, you know, more dependency on sewer than we've had in the past. And the reason for that is, it's stable. You know, that rate changes once a year. Consumers really do have the ability to control that to a degree when they're averaging. And so, you know, if you're watering on a residential meter, that's the time that you don't water, because that really does set your rate for the next year. But once those rates are set, we know what those are. And so it's a lot easier to budget. One of the things that we're really working on from a project standpoint is actual costs to operate each facility. So what is it cost to produce water? What does it cost to treat wastewater? In which we know that by looking at departments, but we're really going to just do a deep-dive look with Public Works and really see what those are and maybe set some targets as to what does the base rate really need to be? Are we there? You know, what percent do we expect that to cover and those kind of things going forward? So that's coming to you within the next few months. So the rate scenario that we brought back from the three that were presented to you, and I apologize, I did not print those out and give those to you today, but I can certainly make those accessible if you need them, was the rate fee, this rate structure that we just talked about. So you can see zero increase on the volumetric side of the base, zero increase on the first tier, which would be your average user, and then higher increases on 15,000 gallons and up. And again, that's a conservation message, and it makes it a little bit easier when we are in drought stages because people are already being really intentional about water use when it comes to watering and those kind of things. So we do have resources that we use with our customers every day. So we do have resources that we use with our customers every day. And one of those is our Neighborhood Assistance Program. And this is a program where current customers make a donation to that fund. The city turns those funds over to CAM, Christian Assistance Ministry, and they assist with utility bills, specifically water and sewer, every day. So we get vouchers from them on a regular. We are not their only funding source, but short of the city managing some sort of program like this, the they, we entered into a contract with them multiple years ago to where we helped fund their program. We work with St. Vincent-Nepal. We work with many other outreach programs that provide some small assistance, some large assistance. We've had the community council that has paid bills for someone for six months at a time. And so we work with a lot of organizations and with our customers if they need assistance when it comes to that. We also work with people who get paid once a month to say, you know, you're not going to have, not going to have late fees if you get paid once a month if you're, you know, on social security or fixed income or whatever. And so we have, we take care of that in-house with our customers individually. So before we move on to other funds, anything about water? I know this is a, it's a hot topic always.
Yes.
Okay.
So I think it's a little bit of a, just no over to say in 2020, the rate increase was so much when you included an extra 1,000 gallons. And so I think during the budget workshop, we kind of calculated back to 17 up to now and and the rate, not including the 1,000, is up less than inflation.
That's right.
And in that time period. So I know it seems like a lot of percentage now, but we've been behind the curve a little bit on on keeping up with with the inflationary impact.
I agree with that. And and I think that looking back over the last few years and and, you know, we did go way back all the way to 2012. We showed 10 years here. We had multiple years where we had no increases at all. And I think, you know, the focus for us, and I'm sure this council and everyone else is always, you know, the consumer and what's the impact? And at the end of the day, the rate doesn't really matter. People want to know what's what's that going to cost? But I think as inflation, to your point, continues, that where where's the getting off place? I guess, for lack of a better word, we have to operate the system. And what does that look like? And then what does sustainability component look like to this council and, you know, to citizens? And and what's the feedback? You know, we've constantly been challenged with save, save, save. But when operations are equal to or less than revenues, that's really difficult to do. And so then we get into a reliency on debt, which is a conversation we continue to have. And, you know, again, it's a dirty word, but it's it's part of our reality. And so we have to plan for that and be responsible with that. And and we feel like this proposal is is part of that responsibility.
In addition to that, compare our water rates to others in other cities in our area. A lot of them live in a much wetter climate east of us.
Right.
And they don't have near the headaches we have or having to have reused ponds and ASR wells and all that. And so I think it's a miracle that we're able to keep the rates as low as they are. And we do know in the future that we have challenges with our growth about having having more water. And it's certainly one of the biggest topics on our citizens' minds. And so we got to plan ahead a little bit and make sure we're not underfunding now, because we're going to, we're going to need more. And and water rates probably going to go up. You know, the next water we get's not going to be cheaper.
Well, and you hear horror stories of other cities that have large main breaks or big, you know, defaults in infrastructure because, you know, of just not paying attention to everyday maintenance. And I think our our Public Works Department does a really good job of identifying what those are, and we have a master plan for a reason. But again, how we get there is really, it's really up to you guys.
Anybody else? Brian.
Okay. So I'm going to touch on other funds. I'm not going to go over every fund, because we have 26 funds in the city, but I'm just going to show you the top four or five. You want to go through them all? Okay. I'm just going to give you the, like, the four or five that actually have significant impact, that there's projects associated with or that you might have a specific interest in. So hot fund, of course. I'm going to relate this a lot to sales tax, because when we're doing analysis, this is kind of what we see. You know, sales tax and and hot tax seem to be trending hand in hand. We are proposing a reduction in in revenue in occupancy tax. And right now, we have a 2% less than 24. But this fund doesn't have to be balanced, so it's a little bit different structurally than the general fund is with sales tax. So things that we get funded out of here, the biggest thing, of course, is CVB. And so Julie and her team turned in a flat budget as requested, so we appreciated that. We've taken out Riverfest kind of at Ashley and her team's request for right now until, again, they can assess those events and kind of see what does a community want and need and what is going to bring in tourism and how does that look in the future? And so I'm sure she will have more information on that as we move forward in the coming months and she starts planning for the next year. Arcadia Live, of course, has some funding there for arts, for the performing arts. And then Fourth on the River, and then a couple of other things. Playhouse 2000 is our other large funding component there that we have. And then you'll see transfers out to the general fund. So that in this year, we're going to do a little bit of emphasis on KSP marketing to see if we can't kind of bring some focus back over there to KSP and drive some tourism up after, you know, we really believe some of the hot revenue and what KSP is experiencing are related to inflation and and, you know, the river has not been the best and things like that. But we just want to kind of take a stab at what do we do to bring KSP back to the forefront in Texas and and beyond that? And then HHHC, we're rebudgeting for that, and you'll know that's from prior years. That's a transfer for that. And so we won't transfer those funds until they're needed. And so when we do fiscal year '24 year-end estimates, you'll see that that will be zero. And then in '25, it will be the million will be back there. And so we expect that that will probably be spent in '25. But again, we'll hold on to that until we're ready to transfer that to that project. Dalton talked a little bit about this, but some realignment in garage fund. So garage fund now reports to Public Works. So that's a little bit different than in the past. That's been working so far. We moved purchasing personnel from over there directly under finance, which really is, we were doing most of the purchasing anyway, so that's really where it belongs. So we better aligned that just from a staffing standpoint. We didn't add FTEs, so you're going to see a reduction in the garage, an increase in finance, and then also Public Works won't have a an impact because of this. So the garage fund is paid for on a percentage basis based on how many pieces of equipment are maintained by each fund. So the general fund contributes some of that, and the water fund contributes some of that based on pieces of equipment. Library Memorial, same kind of thing. The big thing here, of course, is HHHC contribution. And we have spent about $200,000 on that project to date, so 1.8 million left there. And then some other things that are paid for out of this fund. Again, this is not property tax-supported in any way. This fund was established by local donors. And so we always say we want to go to work for the library, because they always get fund money, things come in from them that you don't expect. And so donations there really are what drives this fund and what has allowed us to do some of the things that we've been able to do on that campus. And then Development Services, again, there we had a little bit of realignment here. So a reduction in expenses compared to last year. I did this, and I didn't bring it. I think we did it in a workshop. But when you look at revenues year-over-year, and you really have to say, well, what are revenues going to be? I don't know. We don't know what development's going to happen. And when you're in periods of inflation or you're in kind of a slowing situation like we are now, but then when you go back a couple of years, we exceeded budget by like $400,000. So it's really hard to predict when we're doing a budget in March, April, May, June for an upcoming year, what that looks like. And so where there's a shortfall, the general fund does a transfer, and you'll see that a little bit from the water fund, just based on percentage of projects that are supported by Development Services, which is how they're funded. So. So new and exciting to me, I think, for this year, and we've talked about this a little bit, and back to our sustainability piece, is we've created two new funds. So General Facility Fund and Water Wastewater System and Infrastructure Fund. And, you know, when we talk about, you know, one-time revenue and not being used for recurring expenses and those kind of things, we've really put a lot of thought into, you know, we've really, we've done well with our investments in the past year. You know, we've had an influx of cash with some bond funding that has come in that we've invested well. We've invested the city's portfolio in very safe but responsible ways and had really good return on that. And so instead of buying something new and shiny, we've decided that we would like to propose dedicating a larger portion of this to these two new funds as a baseline for future sustainability needs. And as we talked about, you know, going out and getting debt for maintenance. You know, if we're building these funds a little bit at a time and transferring out of regular operations each year, but it's really hard to start that with $100,000, because the, you know, it, for the duration that it's going to take for us to build a street with $100,000, we just won't get there. And so, not to say we would use this for a street, that's just an example, but, you know, a roof or an HVAC system or something that fails or purchase of a property or... So the idea kind of here is if we sell a property, then that fund, that money would go to this fund and be restricted for future maintenance or future acquisition or repair, replacement, those kind of things of both water and general fund. So on the general fund side, we have a lot more interest revenue, of course. So our proposed budget includes allocating $1 million out of interest to this fund. We did put some money into this fund from a sale of a property that we recently had. Instead of rolling it into the general fund, we put it over here, so it is earmarked for future use. And then on the water fund, I believe we budgeted $500,000 from interest on that side to go into there. So that kind of gives us a baseline for future growth and and just looking forward to say, you know, we know we have something brand new, but it isn't going to last forever. And what does that look like? I mean, the building we're in, you know, it's 12 years old now. So at some point, there's going to have to be some maintenance done. And so if we don't plan for that, we're going to be back to having the same conversations that we've been having since I've been sitting in this chair and before that. So really trying to plan for that. And then debt service, of course. Just kind of included a graph there in what each of these debt funds pays for. So general debt service is funded by property tax, but also by EIC. So I think it's important to know here that $1 million of this 5.1 comes directly from EIC. So while it's property tax-supported, is not paid for by property tax. So when we did the bonds, if you use property tax-supported, typically you're saying you have enough capacity. If you were to pay for it by property tax, to do it that way, and your interest rates are lower. However, EIC is super reliable, and we've never had any issues, and this has been paid for timely every year. So actual property tax debt, right, $4 million for the upcoming year, which does include the public safety facility. And on the water side, again, we budget for this in a separate fund, but it is part of the water fund. So when you see a transfer out on the water fund for debt service, it's going here. So that is where the revenue comes from, from services to the water fund. And you can see debt really starting to stagger here in the next couple of years as we pay off some debt. So, you know, we'll be, again, talk about sustainability and what does that look like going into the future? What are our projects look like from our master plans and those kind of things? And then the last two, and these are really included because we have to have council approval from these two boards. So the TERs, this is the Downtown TERs. They're an advisory board, so they will be meeting next week, I believe. Probably. Coming soon. Oh, it's tomorrow. I don't know where I am. It's tomorrow. And so we'll be presenting this to them. We actually, we're going to do it a little bit sooner, but they weren't able to meet. And so you'll have to approve their budget, you know, with your final in September. So this basically just property tax and interest is all that's included in there. Kind of like EIC, we don't budget projects until they're committed. And for '25, they don't have any committed projects. So the proposal is that at the end of this year, we'll have about $637,000 in fund balance. That's growing a little bit, but you can see our property tax budget is dropping off a little bit there. And that's just because of just changes in, you know, there's some exemptions and things like that. So we just didn't see the growth in '25 that we saw before that because of some, some sales of some property that went to government entities and stuff. And then EIC, same thing. We don't budget any projects until they're committed and funded. And so the projects that are fully funded and committed that we have funding agreements in place for, you'll see on the bottom there. The reason that you're going to see a negative change in net position, again, we, the EIC issued some debt, so we had a large influx of cash and revenue in 2024, which we won't have to offset those expenses in '25. So that's those capital projects there again that explains that. Any questions?
Questions?
Just a couple slides back.
Yes.
You listed a transportation project.
Oh.
Can you tell me what that is?
No, but Dalton can.
Dalton, sir.
Transportation project.
Yes. That, you're on that one.
So ACOG, Alamo Area Council of Governments, they basically got some federal funding for... I'm going to, I'm going to use the term public transit, but it could be any number of things, from microtransit to on-demand transit to whatever. And so there's a $400,000-ish, you know, grant that can be allocated to the city of Kerrville or through Alamo Area Council of Governments. We had met with the ART, Alamo Regional Transit folks, which you actually see some of their buses come around. They do actually do some on-demand services here, probably to the tune of about 5,000 services a year, mostly medical, veterans, you know, underserved folks. They actually, not necessarily partnering with Kerr Connect, but this is separate from Kerr Connect as well, so two different services. And really, this funding, we want to go ahead and set aside, doesn't mean it's going to be used, but they're right now going through the studies. They're doing some master planning to figure out what type of service would benefit our community, our residents, our underserved population, our veteran population, you know, those using medical. So our portion would be 200,000 or just under 200,000. And then the county's portion, if they choose to do it, would be another 200,000. It could be scaled into any number of options. There's still a lot on the table that we don't know. We were just planning ahead, just in case this is something that the community wanted to do, especially since there is such a population here that's already utilizing a service. And Kerr Connect had approached ART as well and had spoken on an interest, so there could be a partnership on an existing, existing partnership with existing organizations.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I answer your question, ma'am?
Yep.
Any other questions for either?
I have one. I'm just curious. When, what was the first deposit of of money, tax money put into the TERs downtown?
It was like 2018. It, well, it actually didn't hit till 2021.
Okay.
With the way everything rolled out. I think it was 60, 60,000.
Yeah.
Was there fund balance at the, at the end of the year? You're going to make my memory work a little bit here.
I've got the number written down as what it is now. I was just curious.
So that goes back a little bit far. So '23 was 110,000 fund balance, so that would have added 22 to it. So I'm going to venture to say 60. Yeah, it was in the 60s that first year. But it it's in our annual report, and I can certainly send that to you, and I believe it's online. I think it was right at 60,000 the first year and then a little bit more the second year. And then that third year, we had some reevaluation of the way commercial properties and things were appraised, and then we had HEB. So some big things that were built in that TERs area that that created a jump there.
Growing.
It is.
I'm noticing.
I think Ms. Barren's did a great job going through all that, and nobody went to sleep.
Death by PowerPoint. We try not to, but...
A couple of people stroke out and have a seizure over here.
Any other questions? Anyone has? Okay. Okay, happy to answer questions of you guys or the public.
Now, we have two speakers signed up, but I do want to say thank you to the finance.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, staff.
Just to say all that tonight, I just.
A lot of notes.
All right, we have two speakers signed up, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Jacqueline Hall.
Ms. Hall.
I have to say, I'm impressed with Ms. Behrens and her knowledge of finance. I am not good at math, so I admire that. So I, I, I'm kind of appreciating the choir in terms of how property taxes work and the property tax rate. If we move forward with the same rate as she explained, you know, we'll continue to have an increase in tax burden on individual taxpayers, especially those of us who don't have our taxes frozen. So, you know, as property values continue to increase, that's not going to stop. That's going to continue to happen. Our tax burden increases. And she mentioned SB two, that was basically kind of a slowing in how fast the rate goes up when it comes to the, you know, the state property taxes and how that interacts. And it wasn't really a true cut for most taxpayers. And so obviously, citizens desperately need a tax cut. She mentioned inflation. Obviously, the city is dealing with that. Every citizen is dealing with that, too. Our incomes are not keeping up at the same rate as inflation, obviously. And also, I know affordable housing is a big priority under the 2050 Plan, just the city of Kerrville. Truly, to create affordable housing, there has to be a significant reduction in property taxes. I think that's what's really driving up the cost of housing, is property tax and spending and inflation. So those things need to be cut and reduced. And young people like me would love to settle here in the hill country. It's a beautiful place. We'd love to stay here, those of us who have been raised here. We just can't, though, you know, with the way that property values are increasing and the cost of housing as a result. We're losing the next generation, which is a really valuable resource. All citizens of Kerrville are suffering under the inflation, and so we're having to trim our individual family budgets. And I think the city should have to do the same. So spending obviously has to be cut if we're going to reduce the tax rate, so then that reduces taxes. And then debt plays into that as well. You know, the more reliant that we are on debt, the more the tax burden increases. So I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
George Broody?
Mr. Broody?
George Broody, sixteen-six and Glen Road, whatever. So kind of touching on what she talked about. I always cringe when people start talking about property tax and they focus you on the rate. Okay, you guys, there's three pieces to the property tax, right? You got the, the revenue from the budget that you guys are requiring, the valuations in the tax rate. You guys only control the revenue. So focus on that as far as all you can control. The valuations, if we treat Kirk had as a slot machine and we say, what can we get this year? Then we're doing it wrong. We're doing it backwards. We're back into the rate. You guys determine a budget, the gap that you need to be filled by property tax, you come up with a number. It can only be X number of dollars over last year. Back yourself into the rate. That's how it works. So no more misdirects to Kirk had as being the problem, because they're not it. You guys define the size of the pie. Kirk had defines how big of a slice I have to worry about. The other is sort of a question. She talked about the water fund being, having a shortfall potentially of a million dollars. If I'm not mistaken, that also means the general fund is facing a shortfall, because isn't there a transfer of administrative, right? Based on the water fund's revenues. So I'm just kind of curious what that amount is going to end up being. The other is, again, with the water fund, I've said this before. When you address the base rate, yes, you get stability, but there's other ways to get stability without impacting the conserving water users. And then the biggest thing in the water fund that nobody seems to talk about, you mentioned the reuse pond. The reuse system is a completely separate system. It's mutually exclusive. The cost of providing that service is separate from the water and sewer. Yet their revenue in the, is being projected at like less than two hundred thousand. The debt that's in the water fund that you're facing right now, about two million of it is towards the reuse pond and its extras for the next five years, because we're paying that K-Pub loan back. So the rates that should be adjusted are those contract rates for reuse customers. That's the one that you could, you could, you could raise their rates and receive a large part of your shortfall without actually impacting the other people, not to mention not making one class of customers subsidize another. I think three of you are living in Comanche Trace or River Hill. They're recipients of this, and it's a fixed, it's like sixty, I think it's still sixty-five cents per thousand, whereas everybody else in potable water is paying like three or four or five, I guess, per thousand dollars. Just raise theirs to what it should be, and that debt starts to go away a little faster, and you can start doing other things with it. That's probably enough. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizens' speaker.
On this, on the presentation of the budget, there's no action for us on this item. It's the next item on which we take action, correct? Does anyone have any comment or suggestions from the presentation of the budget? No?
Oh, good. Thank you, Julie.
Let's, yes, thanks again. Let's proceed then to seven B. Resolution, setting forth a law on property tax rate. And we'll start with Ms. Behrens. Correct?
Shelley, do you need to read that in?
The city attorney.
You don't need to. Not on resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they told me a while ago. I thought they did, too.
Okay, I just don't want to get ahead of myself. I tend to do that. So this resolution, thirty-one dash twenty-two four, is just a resolution for you guys to consider the rate that was proposed today and set a public hearing. That's essentially what this resolution is doing. And so a public hearing would come the first Tuesday and, or the first meeting in September with the first reading and a public hearing, and then the second reading, of course, would be the second meeting in September.
Does council know what we're doing?
I'm sorry?
Council understand what we're doing tonight. All right. Is there a motion then on resolution thirty-one dash twenty-two four?
I'd like to discuss first if I could.
Certainly.
So I, I hear what some business said that they left. I think the fact of the matter is that, that they are, tax rates are fixed to go up no more than three and a half percent on an individual property. So we'd all like to have the taxes be, be less. But we have to kind of, as Ms. Behrens pointed out earlier in her talk, that we're living in an inflationary environment. We've been through from twenty-one to twenty-four or something, we had about two years or, two or three years where inflation was more than four percent. Up to nine percent at one point, so the average must have been six, seven through that time period. And so we can only raise the tax rate three and a half percent. Well, about thirty percent of the tax base is locked. Can't be raised. We could, so we're only raising really about two point three percent new money on existing properties. That's not enough. That's not good fiscal responsibility for the city to sit here and forget. We're getting farther and farther behind. And that's, we just think we got a lot of bloat in the government, in our government spending, which I don't see, we can't not at least take the three and a half percent. And we've got anything banked, we need to do that, so it has it. And Mr. Broody in the past has mentioned about, oh, we have to borrow for the fire truck. Well, we, we need to set more money aside and not rely on borrowing money so much. That's all, that's all fine. But, but what we don't raise, we don't raise the rate this year, then it limits next year, the next year, and forever how much money that the council can ever raise to run the city. And I think the macroeconomic condition that we are in the United States today is we have all this inflation because we're printing money left and right, spending it that we don't have, and we're thirty-five trillion in debt or whatever, and there's no stop to that in Washington. So we've got a Washington problem, that the money is getting less and less and less. And if we don't, we don't kind of keep up with that, we're handicapping councils forever in front of us besides. And it's not a big amount of money that we're behind, was not like a huge difference for taxpayer, but we can't be falling behind because it's just not good management of the city to, to allow ourselves to only be going up two and a half, two point three five percent or something per year when inflation has been way over that, and we're looking at more and more of that ahead of us. I think we need to take every bite we can, and not that we spend more money, but we bank that, you know, for future expenses, whichever fund we think is appropriate.
So are you suggesting that we do the voter approval rate every year?
We take all we can until inflation comes down, you know? But when we're dealing with inflation that we have now, we, we can't, we can't, we can't run the city getting farther and farther and farther behind inflation. And, you know, you can say, oh, yeah, we want to have lower tax rates. Well, sure we do, but we can't run the city. We want streets, we want water, we want the water face for itself. But, but we want the services, we want police protection, we want fire protection, we want these things. We, you know, we can't go along and not keep up with inflation. It doesn't make sense.
I had a conversation with Julie, though, about that, the difference, if we did go to the new vote rate, was what, less than two hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am, it was about, about a hundred and sixty thousand, I think, that we, when we discussed today between the voter approval rate with the increment and the five-five-nine-five.
But then if we don't do the two hundred thousand this year, next year, we're, we have, we're cut back again. So the compounding factor into the future is a huge number.
However, I would say if we're raising the water rate at this time.
Well, that's a different matter.
It is, but it's to, to someone who's paying a bill.
But that's way behind inflation as well. We've not, we also not kept that up.
And I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying it might be something to really think about.
Well, everything's going up. Price of bread, price of everything. I mean, the better what it is, it's going up. And, and that means, that's because the dollar's worth less. It's not like, you know, we're taking in more money and, you know, we're blowing it. It's just everything costs more.
Well, I think to the point of salaries keeping up with inflation, that's a true statement, but everything is relative. So if salaries were to keep up with inflation, then it never will, because costs are going to have to go up, because salaries go up and things cost more. I mean, unfortunately, that's, that's the economic situation we're in right now. And you're right, we all feel, I mean, we're not, the city's not exempt from that, but we all feel that, as we talked about. And I can't, it was about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, the seaman, from what we talked about.
Then you split that over, that's not, the whole city, that's not, that's not a big thing, but over time, it starts getting bigger and bigger, because you're limiting yourself. If you don't go now, you can't go as much next year and the year after.
It's about twenty dollars per taxpayer differential between the proposed rate and the voter approval rate.
All right, so I.
So I would make a motion.
Go ahead, please.
To, that we adjust the tax rate up to the maximum, to the voter approved.
I understand your analysis, but I don't know that that's tenable. Is there a second? I certainly respect what you said. There's no second. Is there a motion then on resolution thirty-one twenty-two four?
I'll move to approve resolution number thirty-one dash twenty-two four.
Is there a second? Any discussion? And again, discussion is fine here. All right. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, so vote. Close, and it passes four to one. All right, resolution thirty-five twenty-two four, Ms. Boyle.
Good evening again, mayor and council. This is a resolution waiving the associated fees for the Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition event they're having in Louis Hayes Park. And I do believe we have Ms. Deanna Allen present to answer any questions you might have. Oh, yeah, no problem.
His patience.
Right, yes, and it's the first day at school, too.
Very well done, young man.
Oh, thank you.
Great.
Fourth grade.
Great.
I'm a roof in fourth grade.
Please proceed, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're totally fine. So, yes, I am the chair of the Kerrville Recovery Community Coalition. We are hosting an event, and we would like to do it in Louis Hayes Park. We'd like to use the Ampli, Ampli, Amphitheater, excuse me, to host this event. So it's in a more public area, and I believe whenever we had talked with the coalition that we were under the impression that, the impression that this could, the waves, the fees could be waived, excuse me. So we're just here to say, hey, is it okay? There are a couple of things, if you guys do, I know it's already eight oh two. If we, if you wouldn't mind hearing, because this event is very, very important to not only our community, but this is an international event that is celebrated across the world, August thirty-first. So with this, it is about remembering and recognizing those lives who were lost due to substance misuse, overdose, poisoning, and just taking the time to acknowledge and just come together as a community to just connect. And that is the goal of the Kerrville Community Coalition, Recovery Coalition, excuse me, is that we're here to bridge y'all with the community. And so with that, I would like to invite y'all, I do have little flyers if you'd like, so that you can meet the community, you can meet the recovery community, because they are a part of Kerrville.
Certainly. Any questions?
I'd like one of those flyers if you have one.
Is it okay if I, like, approach?
Of course.
Thank you.
And if it's okay, I'd like to give each of you guys one.
Please.
I'd like one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While she's passing those out, I will say it's, it hits home, it hits a lot of people, one way or another. Larry, I know that we had a friend of ours, and Scott, from the club, that we lost this year because of substance abuse. So it, it hits home, it's a very big part of our community, because the recovery centers that we have here. So thank y'all for what y'all are doing, and you can count on me being there for your support.
All right, any other questions? Do we have a motion then?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion for, to approve resolution number thirty-five dash two zero two four.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All of us in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously.
I'll probably be there, too. I'm going to try.
Thank you, and thanks for hanging in here with us. Fourth grade, that's a great, my wife taught fourth grade for a while. It's a great, great, great. Eight A, presentation from the Arcadia Live. Let's start with Ms. Behrens, correct? Or, or for whom is going to present for us?
Either one, Ashley or either one really don't have a presentation. We invited folks from the Arcadia Live to talk to you about the fourth event and to answer questions that you might have.
We have reviewed the report. Do you have something you'd like to share?
Well, I know if you want to take a short break, I've got about forty-five minutes worth of stuff. If that's okay.
We want to know all about that phone data, please.
My name's Larry Howard. I'm the president of the board for the Arcadia Live, and we have four of our board members here, Steve Schulte and Scott Stumbo, Juanita Walter and Lacey Paxton, and our executive director, Stacy LaPriati. I handed off all the required paperwork to Ms. Behrens before the meeting for our hot funds request. You do have it in front of you. We do have some information that was sent from the Crowd Kinetics for the geofencing, the number of people that attended the event this year. I think nine thousand eight hundred people were inside the perimeter during the eight o'clock hour, and a total of eleven thousand five hundred people in Louis Hayes Park during that time. I think from the, the hotel site, we had three hundred and seventy cell phones that left the park and ended up at one of our local hotels, three hundred and seventy bed nights for the Fourth of July. We don't know if they stayed one night, two nights, could be more, but we are bringing people to town to spend the night here in our community. The Crowd Kinetics is about twenty pages, it gives demographics on the income, the age, the distance people have traveled. A lot of people come from outside Kirk County to this event, one of the largest fireworks displays in South Texas and the largest free concert in the state. We know it's that way. I don't have much else unless you have any questions. I'd be glad to answer anything you've got, or any of our board members or our executive director.
Well, now that I'm on the main street board, and we're also considering doing some events similar, not, not a music event, but an art festival perhaps downtown. So I was really interested to see a breakdown on your expenses. More, more just so I can justify the fifty thousand.
Sure.
But also just so I can educate myself as to what, what, what do a round of porta potties cost?
Everything is going up, to quote Kent McKinney earlier. And stages cost more, lighting costs more, porta potts cost more. Porta potts have almost doubled in the last two years for use. So I handed Julie our expenses, all the expenses we spent this year, so she has those for the hot funds request, a detail of our annual budget for Arcadia Live, and our balance sheet for our theater.
Yeah, I saw that you were, you were going to have that report, so I was looking for that, in particular for my own curiosity, but.
Yes, I think Julie could share that with you.
She has it, I'll get it.
Okay.
And great job. My husband and I went to, Mike and I went to the inside park.
Yes.
And I was wondering, there was like twenty people there. I was wondering if there was a reason why.
We always have that available, because some people like to go up where it's air-conditioned.
Right.
Have, you know, restrooms, there's several handicap people that normally use our upstairs park, I mean, the theater to view it. So we hand that out to all of our sponsors. They get that and they can go up there. Some years, it's been busier than others. I was surprised it wasn't as busy this year because of the heat down in the park. I think that kept some people away earlier during the day. Yeah, but it was still a very successful event for this year.
It was. It was. Music was good. I mean, that's probably your biggest challenge, is not paying a fortune for musicians.
We have a very good staff. Stacy does an excellent job throughout the year. So this is planned twelve months in advance. We're already working on next year. We've got a meeting on Thursday with our Kerrville Fourth on the Committee Board for Arcadia. And then we have a two o'clock meeting on the fifteenth, I think, with the city for the wrap-up for the fourth with Parks and Rec. They do a fabulous job. We couldn't do it without them, the city of Kerrville, streets and maintenance. So it's, it's a, it's a public-private partnership that goes really, really well.
Yeah, it's a great event, and you guys run it like a well-oiled machine, I must tell you.
Thank you very much.
You do.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the information.
Thank you. For nine is an executive session. Need a motion to go into executive session? Number five-five-one point oh seven one and five-five-one point oh eight seven. Is there a motion? 551.071 and 551.087. Is there a motion?
I move that we go to executive session in the sections 551.071 and 07, 087.
Second. Motion is, motion is second. All those in favor, so vote. All right, we're gonna retire to executive session.
Be green. There we go.
Come back from executive session. We have nothing to report from executive session. There's nothing, no action items. So are there items for future agendas? Anyone?
Do we need to, so if Mr. Broody made a, had a little catch there, we report back what, I mean, there's, George pointed out, the contract on the...
Oh, yes, sir.
1,500 dollar survey. Ashley said she would look into it.
I saw it on there. It just needs to come out.
It's on both.
All right, so does that need to be on a future agenda?
What I'm asking is that would it be appropriate to maybe have some feedback so we don't want that to happen?
Y'all approved the contract. My impression was Ashley was gonna look into it and then report, give y'all a report on what, what she does.
Okay. I think we should get a report back.
I'd like to see a map of that, where exactly that playground is. I can drive through there, but I have to shine a light.
KSP? Yes, ma'am, I can give that to you.
I was just gonna drive through myself, anyway.
Yes, ma'am, the office, between the office and the river. Any other items for future agendas? Hearing none. We are adjourned at 8:50.
Wow, it's the longest one yet.